Right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for the City of Belvidere, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman. Freeman is absent. Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal's absent. Porter. Porter's absent. Snow.
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, thank you. Under public comment, do we have anybody registered?
No, we do not.
I would like to make a brief comment. Saturday at nine thirty and then at ten o'clock, at nine thirty, we had a escort from Logan Avenue, from the County Administration Building at Logan Avenue to the VFW, where we had a memorial remembrance for Jeffrey Earl Smith. As the council knows, we had dedicated Logan Avenue to Jeff Smith Memorial Avenue. And I wanted to thank people that, obviously, that were there. So I'm going to take just a few minutes and do that. I don't want to leave anybody out. And if I have left somebody out, please point that out to me. Anyhow, Jeff, his families, his brother John and his brother Jim were there. His John, John's wife June was there, their daughter Jill, and their niece Morgan. We also had Commander Bernie Bland from Belvidere VFW fourteen sixty-one present. We also had American Legion Post Commander Gino Kuhnwald and his staff that were there. A friend of mine, Jim Corn, veteran, that does a lot of, wears a lot of different hats at the American Legion, was there as well. We had our VAC, Veterans Assistance Commission Superintendent Elizabeth Carville. She was there. We had vets roll that gave us motorcycle escort from Logan to the VFW, Mark Finnegan and Frankie Perez, and a lot of those members. I also want to thank Alan Bus, Pastor Alan Bus, obviously the VFW color guard. I want to thank Police, our Police Department, Police Chief Shane Woody. Thank you very much. I get a lot of comments, chief, on the fact of, you know, how, how our officers conducted themselves along the route and how professional they were and with their salute and their respect. So I appreciate it. Pass it on. I also want to thank our Fire Department. Thank you very much. Chief, thank you. Captain Letourneau, I know, I saw Captain Letourneau there as well. Boone County Fire District Chief, two Chief Coontz and his crew were there. We also had Ann Castro, who's a Gold Star family member. Her brother was killed in a war. And also, of course, I wanted to thank our, our Alder, Alder Woman, Frank, who was there. Thank you, Wendy. I appreciate it. Alderman McGee, Flurry, Albertini. If there was anybody I'm missing, let me know. I couldn't see everybody. I couldn't hardly see anybody. The sun really was giving me fits. We had former Mayor Barrington and former Mayor Peterson there as well. Pam Fettis was there. And I want to thank Brent Anderson for making sure that the signs were placed prior to them traveling down Logan Avenue. I want to thank Sarah, our city clerk, Sarah Turnipseed, her staff, Erica Bluege and Abby Vance, for helping me with some of the paperwork getting prepared. So thank you. Also, Tom Steinkamp, resident. He was a Belvidere High School teacher, track coach. Tom actually had pointed out to me about Jeff Smith and the Smith family and Jeff's sacrifice during the Vietnam. And then all the veterans I want to thank that were there and as well all of our public, our citizens. So thank you, everybody. I thought it went very, very well. And I have to give special kudos to Gina, Gina Del Ros. She really helped me with all the tying up the loose ends. And as I think I said there, you were, you were my, my right arm, but actually left arm there as well. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. It was a really nice, nice turnout. Under public forum, we have none. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, building, planning, zoning unfinished business, we have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning new business. Item A, building department update, Mr. Countryman.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of July, we issued one hundred and thirty-one permits for a construction value just under one point five million. One hundred and twenty of those were residential. Nine were commercial. No single-family homes. Some of the other projects going on, I'll give you an update. General Mills, floors are done. The office areas are at drywall. DQ is getting ready to pull some finals. Aroma Hill, Aroma, I'm not sure the name is. They're getting their finals. Roma.
Hills.
Hills, right? That's what I thought. Sorry. Yukon, they're getting ready to mobilize and bring equipment in to get the pad ready for that project. Taco Bell moving right along. Kunis, they have their floors done. They're in final stages of that project. Midwest Refrigeration, they're calling inspections in for their finals. As you can see, if you drive around, Farmington Fields is about closed out. All the yards are in. Everything's done. They're finishing up in River Bend. And everybody is moving out to Deer Hills Preserve, Village River Run, Deer Hills Two. Update on the downtown that I have, the Masonic, used to be the Masonic Temple. They have set up scaffolding. They're getting that building repaired from the tornado. That's all I have. Opened. Any questions?
Any questions for Kip? Okay. Thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Moving on, item B, planning, zoning, department update. Gina?
Thank you. So there wasn't plan commission in July or August, but we will have one next month. Actually have, as of now, four cases. And then I think one or two may still come in this week. So it was definitely the calm before the storm, it seems like. Site plans are picking up. As Kip said, final inspections are picking up. Did do some downtown overlay reviews. Met with a contractor for the former Lori's Little Critters building. They're getting ready to start redesigning the new facade. The building that helps Illinois Vehicle Insurance, they're doing a lot of facade work on the back end, which is nice, because a lot of times the alley side gets neglected. So they're going to ramp that up. And also looked at a new facade for the old Katie's Automotive. He's going to clean that up as well. So, and then El Moca Hady started their work last week. So there would be quite a bit of activity downtown, fixing up the buildings. So that'll be nice. Zoning letters are staying pretty steady. Obviously, you guys met with the comp plan consultants, so that is still moving forward, which is great. Other than that, August really was the month of meetings, lots and lots of meetings with developers for projects that could be coming forward. And then spending time working on the Smith event and working with the downtown businesses.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Del Ros? Anybody? All right. Thank you, Gina. Item C, a special use extension for twenty sixty-one dash twenty-one fifteen North State Street. There's a memo in your packet from Ms. Del Ros regarding extension requests. Ms. Del Ros, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so this is for the, what used to be three lots next to the Ultimate Car Wash. It was the two houses and then a vacant strip. He had originally got in a special use for a planned development to allow for a strip mall that had a drive-through lane at the end and indoor commercial entertainment. Obviously, there's no more video gaming licenses available at this moment. He still wants to move forward with that project. He is still having a difficult time with professional services. There was an email a couple weeks ago where a consultant submitted an application for building permit, but there was no plans attached to it. So unfortunately, he is still struggling with that end of things. So he is asking for a one-year extension in order to hopefully get some issues resolved and be able to move forward with the project.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions, any comments? Alderman Albertini had his hand up first, then Alder Woman Frank, please.
Okay, the question I have is this is the second extension he's asking for. If he's not granted an extension, he has to refile and pay a fee again?
Correct. He would have to start all over again, which would involve a seven hundred dollar application fee, plus the cost of certified melons, plus the cost of soil and water review. So it would be about a thousand dollars altogether.
Okay, and so with doing this, he's avoiding having to do any new filings and fees?
Correct. In the past, the council has granted extensions, but at some point, like you saw with the car wash property next to Little Caesar's, after so many extensions, it is, well, maybe you need to reassess or start over. So this is the second time he's asked for an extension. And like I said, in the past, the council, after so many years, will start denying them. Unless there's a significant reason, like the solar farm in the Conservation District, since that's so contingent on state permitting and things that are outside of anyone's control, you know, that's a little different situation.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to find that out. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Alder Woman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is for Kip, or maybe Gina, too. So before, they're having problems with professional services, would they have to get that first before they can go to get permits?
Yes, the, and I don't want to put too much personal information out there, but the professional services are the ones that would be designing the site, architectural, civil engineer, all that stuff. So that needs to, that's what submits for the building permits.
Okay, and then he would go to Kip for the permits after that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor then to grant a one-year extension to Mr. Zapata regarding special use extension for case twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three at twenty sixty-one through twenty-one fifteen North State Street. If there are no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And thank you again, Gina. Appreciate it. Public Works unfinished business, we have none. Public Works new business update, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our MFT overlays are in progress currently. They should be finished up this week. Our branch pickup for the latest storm event that we had is ongoing. Once the overlay work is finished, we get caught up with that project, then we'll be able to get back to the branches. So if you're getting any phone calls, we should be back on that. Again, sometime later this week, we'll be back to be picking up branches. And the IEPA has issued a notice of funding opportunity for stormwater projects. And we believe that our detention retention area of our Fifth Street overflow project would be a good qualifier for, for that funding opportunity. We will be making a grant application to complete that portion of the project, because not only will it serve the new bypass storm sewer when it is installed, it'll also serve as a detention filtration basin for the existing storm sewer that's there. And that's the key for this grant round, grant application, is the filtration component of it, of the existing line. So it is a, it's either seventy-five twenty-five match or an eighty-five fifteen, depending on if we're, what our community is ranked for disadvantage, which I think we can take advantage of. But we will find that out. And I'll keep council posted as, as we, the application is actually made to IEPA. That's all I have for updates.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Anderson, Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. When do you generally hear back about whether or not you approve of the grants? Is there a timeframe?
So this specific grant application, I think, is due in September, if I'm not mistaken. And we'll probably hear back by October, end October, first November, probably, something in that timeframe. So it would take place, if we are awarded, work would take place next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Albertini?
I have a quick statement. The people in my community or in my ward were content with the work that was done on their roads, especially at Chrysler Drive. They wanted me to tell you that you did an exceptional job over there, and they were quite pleased with the outcome. So I did want to pass that along for my constituents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving along, item four B, watershed workshops. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. A memo in your packet. The Purdue University Extension and the University of Illinois Extension are developing a new pilot program regarding local water resources. The program is the watershed stewardship for leaders and will consist of a series of four workshops that will run from eleven AM to one thirty PM in a working lunch format with lunch provided. The planned dates for these workshops are Thursday, November second, Thursday, December seventh, Thursday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and the last one will be February first, twenty twenty-four. Each session will be led by a team of resource professionals with watershed experience and will answer where the local water supply draws from, how it is replenished, and the challenges to the quality and abundance of our water. The program will also cover the relationship of our water supply to the Kishawaki River and its tributaries. This program is looking for volunteers to participate from local decision-makers in Boone and Winnebago Counties. So I put this out for your aldermen's consideration. If any of you would be interested in, in attending the workshops, please let me know. As we work, finalize the agendas and get things, as we get closer, we were hoping to get at least two to three representatives from basically all of the, the public bodies within Boone and Winnebago Counties to participate. So again, if you're all interested, if you can make those timeframes that they work for you, let me know and I'll put you down.
Okay. Thank you. Moving along, we have item C, the intersection review at Eighth Avenue and West Fifth, with, yep, easy for me to say, West Fifth Street.
Yeah, memo, a memo in your packet. Currently, the intersection is unmarked. Based on IDOT's current traffic volume map, both streets have an average daily traffic of two hundred vehicles or less. Police Department records indicate six accidents at this intersection over the last five years. The intersection is located in a residential neighborhood with typical pedestrian activity. No site distance limitations were noted. And based on this information, we would recommend that traffic on West Fifth Street stop at the intersection of Eighth Avenue.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Snow?
So who actually initiated this? A constituent or some other incident?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Yeah, I had received a call in, from the individuals at that intersection. And their recollection was that they had had accidents there, but they also had, had a problem with the intersection, with people flying through, with nobody stopping, nobody knowing which way, you know, who had the right of way and what have you. And they thought that after six accidents, it was probably a good idea. And Director Anderson agreed, so it started, I did receive a phone call on it. Alder Woman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. Is that right by the school or the church?
It's one block away. Seventh is the school and the church, Seventh Avenue and Fifth, West, West Fifth Street. So it would be one block to the west.
Brent, are there any yield signs or anything?
There's nothing there right now.
Any other questions? All right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you.
And this will come back in ordinance form.
Thank you, Brent. Item D?
Item D, intersection review at Willow Street and Beacon Drive. I believe there's a gentleman here at our, one of the last meetings that spoke regarding the intersection. Again, this intersection is unmarked. Both streets have ADT of two hundred or less. And Police Department records indicate no accidents at this intersection over the last five years. Again, it's residential neighborhood with typical pedestrian activity. No site distance limitations noted. Based on that information, no changes are needed at this intersection at this time. However, if council considers regulation for this intersection, it would be recommended that traffic on Willow Street yield to traffic on Beacon Drive.
So it is up to the council how they want to proceed with this. As Director Anderson said, we've had in the past where we haven't had any accidents. And they are not justified, however. We have also made some exceptions, and that's been left up to the council. So however you want to proceed, we can do that. Motion by Alderman Snow, second. Second. Yes. I assume Alderman?
Yes.
Yeah, Alderman Snow, thank you. Second by Alder Woman Frank, thank you. Any question, any comments? Alder Woman Grantowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I did get a call from this gentleman, so I did go drive the intersection. It's wide open. I think I would recall, I would like to see a stop sign. Actually, there's a family there that has seven children under the age of eleven. So I don't know what the protocol would be to get a stop sign versus a yield sign.
So typically, and what the difference is, would be your accidents. The fact that there's been zero accidents over there in the last five years versus the previous intersection that we just reviewed had six, six accidents over that same five-year period. And that's kind of the weighted factor that would take you to a stop sign versus a yield sign initially.
Okay, then I would agree with the yield sign then. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Snow?
So in general, though, I always found it disconcerting having intersections that aren't controlled. And so you're telling, basically saying IDOT says that, hey, you don't need controls at all intersections. I understand T intersections, they control themselves. But when you have crisscross streets, it just seems that, because when I'm riding down, I'm assuming if I don't see one and I don't see one in the opposing, like somebody knocked it over, that I've got right of way.
Well, rules of the road, you always yield to the right. So when you approach an unmarked intersection, you yield to the right. And there's, yeah, not a, there's no requirement to have regulation at every intersection.
And how bad do we get dinged if we do have, if we went around more methodically and put yield signs and controlled most of the intersections? Would that be an audit that they would have to do, or would we get dinged harder or less?
You wouldn't necessarily get dinged hard. You would just have more infrastructure out there installed and more cost, more future maintenance, more replacement costs as you go forward, because now you have signs there that you didn't have before. In the past, in the past, where we have been dinged in the past is if you have a four-way stop and there's definite, there's definite requirements that you have to meet to make the four-way stop. And those would be the ones that we have gotten dinged in the previous, in the past, that we had to go back and revert back to what they should have been, because they did not comply with the regulations.
If, if I might, you know, living at the intersection of Berlin and West Jackson, which is a T intersection, when I first moved at that location, it was a yield sign. And then somewhere in the line, poof, it became a stop sign, not while I was alderman, but, and I don't know what the rationale there would be as opposed to, A, and leaving it a yield sign and or unmarked, since it is a T intersection.
Again, it depends on what the accident history is, the rest of just doing the intersection review and see where, what, where that led to.
City Attorney had something?
Just briefly, what you do get dinged is in court on enforcement. It could result in a finding of not guilty for defendants if the signs were, if the signs were installed without proper warrants behind them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other comments? We have a motion on the floor then to recommend back to the council for a yield at traffic on Willow, yield to traffic on Beacon. If there are no other comments or questions, that's the, that is the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And Brent, item E?
Yes, again, memo in your packet, our biannual bridge inspections are again due in twenty twenty-three. Inspections will be completed by Hampton, Zinni, and Renwick, who is our IDOT-approved bridge manager. And that includes one, two, three, four, five, six structures. The cost of inspections is on a time and material basis, not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred. This work will be paid for from light item zero one five, three sixty, sixty one forty, engineering services.
Okay, can I get a motion of that effect, please? Everybody? Motion by Alder Woman Graham Kowski, thank you. And a second, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions, any comments for Brent? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. And item F?
Yeah, memo in your packet, well number eleven drilling engineering services amendment. Good news, bad news. We'll start with the bad news first. Based on the extended time for IPA review and separating our well eleven project into two phases by the IEPA, our engineer for this project, Strand Associates, has requested an amendment to the engineering services agreement. The amendment includes extending the completion date from December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and a cost increase of eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to cover the extended period of time and the additional administration of two loan documents instead of one. That's the bad news. The good news, before I make the, recommend the motion, the good news is we were late last week, we were advised by IEPA that we have one point three million dollars of principal forgiveness earmarked for this project in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which is why the state has required us to go into two different contracts, because the overall time for drilling the well, plus to build the facility, will be longer than that fiscal year twenty twenty-four period. And because of that earmark has to be spent in twenty twenty-four, that's why it's being applied to the drilling. So the bottom line is basically the majority of that Phase One, the drilling of the well itself, will basically be hundred, hundred percent paid for by the state. So with that being said, I would recommend approval of amendment number one to the engineering services agreement with Strand Associates for well number eleven in the amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This work will be paid for from the Water Plant Depreciation Fund.
Okay, can I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Albertini, is that right? Second, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Any questions? Alderman Albertini?
I guess I missed this. What is causing the delay between December twentieth, twenty twenty-two to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
Well, well, the, the reason why we're doing new well number eleven is because of the PFAS and the PFAS emerging, emerging contaminants, as they're known through IPA. as they're known through IPA, that were found in our, in well number four and well number three of our existing wells. And we went through a study to see what the best solution to that would be, whether it would be to treat those two wells and keep them in service or build a new well, create, install a new well. And that report indicated that construction of a new well would be the best option for us. So EPA indicated that they were going to have funding available for this emerging contaminants. And again, it wasn't till, and that, again, that was known rather fairly early on, but the parameters of the program weren't known until finally this last week when we were notified that we were earmarked for that one point three million. So that's basically been the delay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Director Anderson? All right, hearing none. We have a motion on the floor. Then all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And item G?
I'll, I'll Shannon take care of this one.
I'm sorry. Director Hanson?
So memo in your packet, as you know, last fall, the city received one point seven million in ARPA funds, which was the second of two identical payments with the first being received in the previous fiscal year. The city has until the end of calendar year twenty-four to use the entire three point four million. To date, with council's approval, funds have been used or earmarked for the following eligible projects. Southwest Tower Rehabilitation, six hundred thousand, Primary Clarifier Upgrade, seven hundred thousand, and the purchase of the fire engine, two hundred and forty-five, four sixty-five, twenty-six. The Southwest Tower Rehabilitation Project is complete, as is the purchase of the fire engine, with only the primary clarifier upgrade still in progress. This project is part of the current fiscal year's capital plan and the cost to complete the remainder of the project is eight hundred and sixteen thousand. Therefore, I recommend approving the use of eight hundred and sixteen thousand of ARPA funds in fiscal year twenty-four for construction costs related to the primary clarifier upgrades.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Could I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you, and a second. Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? I think it's Alderman Flurry.
Thank you. So this eight sixteen takes us roughly to two point three. So do we have anything else earmarked for the remaining one point three? Or we just have, you said we have till twenty twenty-four, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four?
We have till the end of calendar year twenty-four to use the funds, which will be, I think with this, if we, if you approve this, that leaves us about nine hundred and thirty-three thousand. We do not have that earmarked right now. If we come up with a project, we will certainly bring it to council, but we're kind of holding back just to see what happens with the ambulance services, quite honestly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You made my comment. Thank you, Shannon. Appreciate it. And Brent was the first, I'll note that Brent was the first to have his hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions on the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. And moving along here, item five other, we have item A, please, Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. If you turn to the memo in your packets, police department is requesting a motion to accept a donation of one hundred dollars from Paul and Dorothy Hale to be used for the qualification banquet this October.
Can I get a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Any questions, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed. And chief, please thank the Hales, Paul and Dorothy Hale. I know they, this isn't the first time they do, they've done this and it's awful generous of them. I appreciate it. Please convey that.
I will, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item B, Fire, Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. Council, included in your packet, you'll see a memo describing the need for the replacement of concrete at both Station Two and Station One. Back in December, we did budget for a capital expense since it was such a large expense. I spread it over two fiscal years, fiscal years, and we were planning on doing Station Two this year. I said I was going to enclose some pictures in your packet. I brought those for you and that's the pictures you see. That first picture you see there is a picture of the drain that is actually inside Station Two. So that is the concrete floor and drain. Back in, let's fast forward a little bit, we had OSHA come out for a voluntary site visit. It was something, we had a new training officer and me being a new chief, I wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could safety-wise and what the state was expecting of us. And one thing they noted was the condition of the concrete at the stations. They said anytime they have greater than a one-half inch height variation in walking areas, it's considered a trip hazard. And so that really brought that to our radar. We had fixed it and patched it, as you can see, over a number of years. And we got some quotes to replace that. When, so Dan Lieutenant Drawl takes care of our stations. When getting quotes, we realized that the quotes were more favorable than we initially anticipated. And we found out that within a couple of the vendors, that we could actually do all four required fixes with the allotted money that was budgeted this year. As we know, things aren't getting less expensive and it would, since it is a safety issue, if we're able to take care of it now rather than later, it'd be a good idea. I asked the mayor and Shannon about the possibility of doing all the projects within that fixed amount of money. And they said that it would be along the same lines and it was within the expenses. So what I did to allow you guys to decide how you'd want to proceed, I broke it up into three different motions. The very first motion is what is the repairs that were planned in this fiscal year in the capital expenditure? And that would include fixing the approach at Station Two and then the drain inside of the station. The next bid is to replace the concrete at Station One. And again, that's just the approach. And that third bid is, once that drain and concrete inside of Station Two is cut out and repaired, there's also many areas of the floor other than where they're going to be doing the repair work where the surface needs to be replaced. And we were able to get two bids for that. And those are the two bids there for your consideration. And that's the third motion. And as I said, if you guys approved all three tonight, the total for all of that would be eighty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. That would all come from the capital fund. We had planned or allotted for eighty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars in this fiscal year for, to repair that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Alderman Albertini?
So you're saying this money was already budgeted for to be spent for this work?
Yes. The eighty-seven thousand was budgeted to take care of the concrete repairs at Station Two. When we started getting additional bids, because during budgeting process, you know, we don't get three bids because these are kind of like bids that really are only for budgeting purpose and it takes contractors' time. So we want to take time to get three good bids. So we just ask a contractor to bid and get those estimates. And that's what we do for budgeting. But that was a, once we got the actual bids and got three good bids, we saw that the prices were allotted for with that total amount that we budgeted for this year. So to answer your question directly, we had budgeted eighty-seven thousand within the capital fund for us to spend this year on Station Two concrete repairs. And all four projects actually come in under that with choosing the vendors as I laid out.
You very much.
Yeah, I might add, before Chief Shadle came on board as chief, that was going to be done in capital plans over two-year period. And, but we didn't have, as he said, we, he had asked me about it and I thought if we could probably get this done with, we needed to probably get more bids in order to see exactly what we were talking about. I think we only had one bid. So chief was able to go out, get some other bids, and we were able to get a lot more done. And actually, we were able to get it all done. So I think, I think it's a good deal, but that's the rest of it. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that the lowest bids came from the same person, same contract. Sorry for my voice, but I know Alderman or Alderwoman Freeman asked this before, maybe not to you, but what if these bids that were lower actually aren't lower in outcome and they have to come back for like a second bid? Or not a second bid, but you know, it costs more? Would this happen in this example?
It's possible. It shouldn't. Each, each one of those bids allows variations. It says that if we have to do more than we expect, if we have to remove more than we anticipate, but they all pretty much say the same thing as about what they, what they need to be done. The contractor with the low bid and most of those, Aldo was referred to me as someone who had done work for the city prior and they were happy with the work. There's always a possibility to run into some unforeseen extra costs and it would be possible that it would happen, as you guys have seen with the larger projects. This kind of being a pretty straightforward project, I want to anticipate that. And I don't think that that would be good business for anybody to do, to come in and just give a really low bid and then invoice us at a significantly higher price. I know they would not have business, more business with us in the future if that was what happened.
That's what I was afraid of, you know, do a low bid, get in, and then cost more later. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will say, I'd ask chief that this morning, very similar question, Alderwoman Frank. And, you know, I think there may be, maybe a little bit of perhaps additional cost if the price of concrete continues to go up by the time we decide to do that project, but it shouldn't be significant. Maybe I think we'd talk about a thousand dollars. But pretty much the specs are all laid out whenever they bid. They bid on the same thing and they would all face the cost of concrete cost as well. But regarding any of the specs, they've all bid on the same exact project. So I don't anticipate that that's going to be a problem, but it's a good question, yeah. I asked the same thing. Thank you. Alderwoman Gramkowski?
When looking at some of these specs, I looked and saw that Bell Rock was quite a bit more, but they are doing ten inches versus eight. Are we worried about structural integrity in the long run?
So I did ask the contractors, like I said, Lieutenant Drawl got most of these, but one of the contractors wasn't available. And I talked to him about this very issue. All the other ones were at eight. And I said, yeah, for commercial projects, that eight inches is what they do. I mean, would ten inches perhaps last longer? Of course, you kind of get what you, get what you pay for. I would even defer a little bit to Brent on his knowledge of thickness of concrete and how it would be appropriate for our stations.
It would be appropriate for the loading that the fire trucks provide. We have residential streets in our community that have already inches, even less. We have a few streets that are five inches of concrete playing on dirt. So having eight inches of concrete with a proper base underneath it should be sufficient in this case.
Thank you. And I guess I don't have a motion on the floor. The city attorney reminded me about that. So if I could get a motion on the floor to, motion to accept, we'll do them one at a time if you like. And then they're on record, each one individually. So the first would be a motion to accept from Aldo's estimate number ten fifteen for forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars to replace the concrete approach at Station Two and repair the Station Two drains. If I could get, if I could get that motion, please. Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman McGee, thank you very much. Any questions, any comments on the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anybody opposed. Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And then motion to accept, the second bid, second motion would be to accept from Aldo's estimate number ten twenty for, in the amount of twenty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents to replace the concrete approach at Station One. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And then last would be the motion to accept from Lifestyle, excuse me, Lifestyle Garage, contract number seventy-seven seventy-four for eighteen thousand to resurface the Station Two apparatus bay floor. If I could have a motion that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Albertini, and a second, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that motion, Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. You said Lieutenant Drawl did the bids on this? If you could just express our gratitude for finding these bids and doing that due diligence that, once we found one that was way below to keep looking and now we can actually solve all four problems under budget and actually be ahead of the power curve. Normally, we're kind of having to hear like, well, when we bid this three years ago, it cost this much. But with the cost of everything going up, it's gone up. So it's nice to actually be on the receiving end of a good deal. So thank you.
I will pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item C? Oh, I'm sorry. I got lost here. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Item C, Amendment of Section seventy-four dash twenty-two twenty-one of the fireworks of city code. You have a memo from me consistent with state law. The city bans the possession, sale, and use of illegal fireworks within the city of Belvidere and pre-annexed territories. Despite this ordinance, many individuals in Belvidere choose to violate the law and utilize illegal fireworks. They are not dissuaded by the current ordinance or state law. As we all know, illegal fireworks can be very dangerous. They are a fire risk, especially within densely populated areas like Belvidere. They can also, they also create a risk of personal injury or even death. Illegal fireworks also constitute a public nuisance. They are not just used on the Fourth of July, but for weeks before and after Independence Day. Individuals explode their illegal fireworks at all hours of the night, disturbing the neighbors' peace and quiet. They even create extreme anxiety for pets within the community and causing stress for their owners. And it isn't in here, but not to mention, I have received calls from individuals with PTSD or people that have handicapped children. I recommend amending Section seventy-four dash two twenty-one of the city of Belvidere municipal code to increase the minimum fine for violation of seventy-four dash two twenty-one from a hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. The hope is the amount of the new minimum fine will dissuade individuals from choosing to violate both state law and local ordinances. I would ask a recommended motion to amend Section seventy-four dash two twenty-one of the city of Belvidere municipal code to set the minimum fine for violation of that section at two hundred and fifty dollars. And this would, obviously, it would be coming back to you in ordinance form in two weeks. So if I could, motion by Alderman Snow, can I get a second from anybody? Second by Alderman Baird, and thank you. Alderman Snow?
So I always thought the, I have an issue with this whole fireworks thing. And if I could get any backing, I'd make a motion to amend the two hundred and fifty to five hundred.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we're all in agreement. We have a motion to amend, motion by Alderman Albertini, or second by Alderman Albertini, motion by Alderman Snow. Thank you. Okay. We will vote on the motion as amended. Alderman Flurry?
So I understand, you know, the wanting to dissuade people from using fireworks, but obviously, a lot of people that do use fireworks. Is there, I don't know how muddy this would be, but is there? this would be, but is there a way where we could say, so still make this two fifty, five hundred, or whatever the council depends on, but is there something where we could each year, like if Fourth of July is on Saturday, that weekend, you know, it's that five hundred dollar fine? But I think some of the problems with homeowners and people that have PTSD is that people start setting off fireworks two weeks before, they go two weeks after. Is there a way to like, maybe to limit that amount when people are going to be doing it? Say, make the fine like extremely high on those other weekends, and then that, say, Fourth of July weekend, it would be that five hundred or whatever it is of that? Is that a possibility? That would, I think that, I think the biggest problem is, is people with pets is that it's, you know, eight days in a row, and, you know, maybe this five hundred will help some of it, but I think some people are just determined to set off fireworks no matter what, and when there's, you know, a population of twenty-five thousand, our police force does a great job, but I don't think they can be everywhere at every time. Maybe that might dissuade some of this, too.
I have a comment, but go ahead. Okay. So I guess my comment would be that they are illegal, and individuals, we've had individuals, we had a person up in Garden Prairie actually blow their head off in front of their child. I had seen this year during Fourth of July, which, they're all illegal in Illinois, a gentleman in Lake County blew his face off. And I also don't think there's any good time or time that should be exempted from individuals that may create harm or burn somebody's house down. I don't think we, I don't think it's proper. I, I wouldn't support it. I, I don't believe that you give them a certain time because, or a certain date. I know that they let fireworks off, they fire them off months before Independence Day and even after. They're still doing it now. And these, but these are small, these aren't small fireworks, these are large fireworks. These are definitely a danger to, to public safety, and they're a danger whether or not they be on Independence Day or two days before, or whether they're like they are weeks before and weeks after. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I think it would create some confusion regarding that, even with an escalated fine, Alderman Flurry, because some people just have total disrespect for other people's quality of life, their safety, whether or not they have pets, whether or not they have individuals that have PTSD, whether or not their children have to get up in the morning to go to school, and it really, or whether individuals have to go to work. And it is unfortunate. It, it is very, very unfortunate, but that's my two cents, and I, I think the city attorney had something, let's see what he had to say, and then, go ahead, sure.
I just want to clarify, I wasn't asking for an exemption. I was just trying to say, have a fine and then an, an increased fine. So I wasn't, I wasn't in support of an exemption of fireworks, just trying to look at ways to dissuade that two to three-week window of people that are breaking the law.
I guess an escalated, maybe an escalated fine probably, you know, I, I would think that if you go ahead and make it at five hundred dollars, that I think anybody who gets a fine for five hundred dollars is probably going to be able to feel that. And it, like I said, it is unfortunate, and I, I just think we've been very lucky here in the city not to have somebody, you know, either hurt themselves, that's their fault, quite frankly, but if you have an innocent child, or you have a neighbor, or it goes into their house and it causes a fire, and Chief Shadle has to run out there and risk his crew, they have to risk their safety. Certainly, at times during the Fourth, we all know, the seasonal, a lot of times it's dry. It's, this year was that way, last year was that way, and it's amazing. I, I, but I think it's a good motion, and I appreciate the amendment. But anyhow, city attorney first, and then, was it Alderwoman Gramkowski or Alderman Snow? Okay. City attorney?
Answered a question I don't know. Some concerns that come to mind when you talk about having different minimum fine amounts. And keep in mind, when I say minimum fine, currently, the minimum fine is a hundred dollars, the maximum fine is seven fifty. So change that range to five hundred to seven fifty. Judge can always assess more, up to the seven fifty, but I've never seen him actually assess more than the minimum, which is why the motion was presented by the mayor in the first place. The five hundred dollar fine recommendation, as far as assessing a different minimum fine depending on time of year, day of week, date, what have you, one of the concerns that jumps in my mind is the Illinois and U.S. equal protection clauses. You're basically charging people a different amount of fine for the same offense, just on the date of the year. That could be a problem. Certainly, different fine amounts are applied in other situations. For example, speeding in a school zone during school days when children are present carries a higher fine than would at other times. But that's always tied to the increased risk because there's children there, where I don't know that we could point to that in this situation. So I, that would require research, and I'm not saying it's impossible. It's not necessarily something I would recommend, because it does invite those kinds of questions.
Yep, thank you. Alderman Snow?
So on that, having pursued previously with Mr. Droll, somebody who shot off fireworks and got snagged on the second time for doing it, I had emailed him and said, let's jack it up to the five, or the seven hundred dollar amount. That did not occur. So my contention would be to encourage the attorney to pursue those higher dollar amounts, and even ask the judge to go beyond the seven fifty, if possible, to make these points.
I don't want to get into too much into my strategy in litigating cases for the city on TV. First of all, unless the city council uses home authority to set a different maximum amount, we're limited by, to the seven fifty by state statute. We could increase that with a home authority that's never been done in the city for any offense, with the exception of tax evasion on, on gas taxes and things like that. The second problem you run into is, it doesn't matter what I pursue, and all you'd be doing is tying up my time and your police officer's time, having to have a lot of trials, to go to trial for the judge to set the, assess the minimum fine anyway. One of the things I do when I am working in front of the judge, if there's a case where I think strongly that the judge would actually back me in going for the higher fine, yes, I'll go for that higher fine, and I will litigate that, and I'll go to trial and ask the judge for the higher fine. If I have a case where I know that the judge is going to offer, assess the minimum fine, it doesn't make a lot of sense bringing, bringing police officers in on overtime to have a trial where it would settle for the same amount the judge is going to offer. So I usually offer that, that amount. Because frankly, I'm in front of these judges for two and three years at a time, I get a pretty good feeling for what they're going to do after a trial, assuming I win, so that's the approach I take with it. If the council's directing me never to offer anything less than the maximum, I'll do that, but you will see an increase in overtime cost for police officers coming to court.
Okay, I think, you know, to me, the, by raising this from two five hundred dollars, I think puts a lot more teeth in it, and I think people, if they realize they have to part with that type of money, potentially up to seven fifty, I guess, that's not chump change. I would assume that they can afford it since they buy thousands, some of them buy thousands of dollars of fireworks, so they may be able to afford that, but at least it will take, it will have some teeth to it, I do believe. I don't disagree with Alderman Snow. I also agree with Alderman Flurry that I want to thank Chief Woody, he hears from me all the time regarding this enforcement, because I hear from people all the time. I have people call me, I have people come over to my house, I have people come up to City Hall. And so, and, you know, they point to, you know, what can you do? And I think this is a good step in that direction. So do we have anybody? Alderwoman Frank, and then Alderman Albertini?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I had two questions. One, for Chief Woody, do we always find them, or do sometimes they get warnings?
No, the last couple of years, it's been a zero tolerance on fireworks at the direction of the mayor. And prior to that, we've taken our direction either from the, the council or at the mayor's office. If, without direction, we do play it by ear, depending on what the circumstances are, how many times we've been to the residence, what type of fireworks they have, how many fireworks they have, and then the officers have some discretion to decide what's appropriate. For the last couple of years, that discretion has been directed by me for a zero tolerance policy.
Thank you. So the other question I had, Mayor, was at Three Hammer, they sell fireworks. We're sending a mixed message. Is that because they're county and they can do that?
Well, that's an interesting question, and I'm not going to dance around it. I'm going to say just exactly what I feel and what's transpired. So you're right, that is out in the county, it's just as illegal to sell and use fireworks in the county, it's a state or state law statute. And anyhow, I do want to thank our Belvidere Police Department. I had brought the same thing up. To me, it doesn't make sense, you're selling fireworks twenty-five hundred feet outside of the city limits, and people have received fines and come in and seen me and said, well, Mayor, I bought these in Belvidere. And in fact, they had bought them in the county, and they did not buy them in Belvidere, but it really doesn't make any difference, but it is confusing. People think, oh, here's a fireworks stand, yeah, I'm going to buy these fireworks and they're selling them. So I did ask that we look into that, and I will tell you this right now, the county wasn't, wasn't worried about enforcing the law, but the city was. And in conjunction with the state police, the city went out, and the city did the job that should have been done originally. So the city went out, and the city made sure of what they were selling, and then we confiscated it, and we fined them accordingly, and basically shut them down. So I am appreciative to Chief Woody, because, you know, a lot of those people that go by there, they live in the city, and they think that they can buy them in the city, and that is a, a tremendous problem, and always has been. And it's been going on for years, and I could never understand why. To me, it didn't make any sense. So I, I do take my hat off to the police department, I appreciate it, I think it is a quality of life issue, and I appreciate Sheriff Woody, I, I'm sorry, Chief Woody, for doing two jobs and wearing two hats, so thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Albertini?
Okay, this ordinance, does it also cover just hoarding or selling, and the fine go along with that, or is there a different ordinance for that? Or do we do anything when we catch people selling them, or have a trunkload of these things when we pull them over? Are we fining them, or just, what do we do with that?
It's the same, it's, it's possession, sale, ownership, exploding, it's all the same fines, structured the same statutes, same ordinance.
That's what I was asking, it's the same ordinance.
It basically adopts the Illinois State Statute, says the defining mechanism is to what's illegal in the city.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you very much.
Mayor? Alderman Snow?
And so, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the, if we as citizens witness somebody shooting them off, we call the police, the police don't witness it, we can swear out a complaint, and we have to be willing to show up to court to testify that, yes, they were shooting them off. Is that not correct? And so, while we don't tie up an officer's time necessarily, but we as constituents, citizens can swear out the complaint and be willing to show up for the court date.
You'll still need a police officer to actually do the citation and have you sign it. So eventually, a police officer's going to have to go out there. The other problem you run into is, well, they could do it after the fact, certainly. It could be the next day, what have you, and you just sign the complaint. The difficulty comes into, they then got to serve the defendant with that citation, unless you can point out, yeah, it was, Mike Trout lives next door to me, it's going to be hard for them to do it. It's much easier for prosecution purposes and service purposes to do it at the same time. Not impossible to do it later, but much easier at the time.
Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would encourage anybody that witnesses a violation to contact our department, so we can go out there. And even though we may not actually see or witness the violation itself, I mean, we can talk to people who may be on the premise, we may be able to obtain other evidence that we could use in support of what you may have witnessed. But ultimately, yeah, if absence us being able to witness that violation, that could be an alternative, where the person who wanted to cooperate or call could sign that citation, and ultimately, we could serve it based off that.
Alderwoman Gramkowski?
How many citations do you usually write, say, the Fourth of July?
I would estimate, probably in the hundreds.
And I have done that, Alderman Snow, I have filed a complaint and appeared in court when I was an alderman, and because, you know, people complain to you, to me, when I was an alderman, and they expect that, you know, they don't want to suffer all night if they don't have to, and I think, I think part of it is, there's a little bit of intimidation that goes along with that, you know, if they continue to go off, but I do think that it's the right thing to do. I think it impacts law-abiding citizen in a positive way, and I am definitely appreciative to go ahead and have this amendment. So we have, we have the amendment to raise it to five hundred as a minimum. If there are no other questions, all those in favor of the amendment to the original motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, if there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed. So then we have the, the motion as amended. Any questions regarding the motion as amended? And if there is none, the motion as amended, then to amend section, we'll read Section seventy-four dash two twenty-one of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code to set the minimum fine for violation of that section at five hundred dollars. This would obviously come back in ordinance form. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, and I thank you for that, and I think the citizens of Belvidere will thank you as well. So that's all we have on our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Albertini. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? For the record, we'll leave at seven oh, we adjourned at seven oh six P.M. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time.